Not the way it goes.
Okay, everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mayor, if you could help us with roll call, please.
Alderperson Henry, here. Jim Barron.
Here.
Jackie Valdi.
Here.
Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Grimmer.
Here.
Phil Casson.
Here.
Tim Hiker.
Here.
Mayor Hatwell.
Present.
Administrator Hefner.
Here.
Okay. We will move on to number four, council organizational matters, for a election of a common council president for a one-year term.
I'm going to throw out a new curve ball and nominate Wayne Dean for council president for a one-year term.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'm nominating him. I think there needs to be a second. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, then I would second the motion, second the nomination. Okay. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to hear from Wayne.
Wayne?
I accept the nomination. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Is there any other interest?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Passes. Okay. We'll go on to 4B, mayor's appointments. Okay, we have a list of appointments that I've made. Most of them are renewals. There's some new folks on here. I did want to make sure that I went and said that I really appreciate all of the hard work that Jim Reyer has done on the Park and Rec for many years. He's, I believe, served on there for eight years and four years as the chair, and he should be very proud of the history that he's put forth and doing a lot of different roles with that committee. And I'd just like to take the Park and Rec Commission in a little different direction that's moving forward. So I have not reappointed Jim, and I've appointed Dan in his place, and his information is in the package.
Do we want to do these things in order, or do we want to jump on the elephant in the room?
It's really up to the common council. In past years, we've taken the whole slate at once. You could do, if there's one area of concern, you could just eliminate that area and do the rest of the slate at once.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of nominees with the exception of Park and Rec candidates.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, there's, I have a question about the CDA committee. You've appointed a common council member. According to our, the, I don't know, it's on the website that we're supposed to have two aldermen to that committee. Four citizens voted at four-year terms at alternate. So who is the elder alderman that is nominated for CDA?
Who is the alterperson for the community development?
Yeah, there's supposed to be two. You've got one nominated, but I only saw one. There's supposed to be two aldermen on that committee.
Well, apparently the list doesn't have one, so glad you pointed that out. We'll have to look at that and do that at the next meeting.
Well, when is Wayne Dean's term up?
Both aldermen are elected to only one-year terms, and the citizens are elected to alternating four-year terms.
Why don't we just look at it for the next meeting? I mean, it's amended, we can fix it.
Yeah, and it's a vacancy, so.
So could you amend your motion, Matt, to set aside community development and approve the other slates outside of community development and Parks and Rec?
Well, since it's a vacancy.
It's a vacancy, so do I have to remove my?
No, I don't have to.
Nominate who we got.
Do I?
I don't know.
If it's a vacancy, I don't have to clarify it. We can just fill the vacancy at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, all right. Works.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Passes.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I'll start off if anybody else wants to join in. When I got the list of folks, I didn't realize that, that a person was going to be removed, and my concern is, I recognize fully that it is the mayor's prerogative to move people around. My concern is that I'm not sure why this person at this time being replaced by somebody with no Parks and Rec experience, really no volunteer work in the, in the community of which I am aware. And I know I'm not omniscient. I'm concerned about that pattern and about the loss. I was looking at some of the codes, and it said that, you know, like, any vacancies occurring on, for instance, Parks and Rec will be filled by appointment by the mayor, but it doesn't say anything about the mayor must or can create vacancies to fill. And so I'm a little troubled by that, but I'm troubled by the loss to the city. Sometimes I think going in a new direction means what exactly, and the service that I have, the service that the city has received is from just certain individuals. Like, some people, all people are creative equal, but some of them perform above others. And I feel my observation from the creation of, or certainly co-creation of, the Friends of the Bark River, the free legal advice that we get, and the collegiality with which the Parks and Rec Commission has greeted Mr. Reyer is, is very impressive. And I served on, on the committee when, for a short while before the mayor removed me from Parks and Rec as the alderperson, and I accepted that redirection, and, and it was the same thing. It just feels like a grave misdeed for the city, for the city of Dellafield, for the citizens, to take, take your ringer, take your quarterback, and put in, you know, a walk-on. I, I mean, all due respect, I don't know Dan, but that's what bothers me. I don't know who this person is and why that is a prudent decision at this time. And I know that it is the mayor's prerogative, but we have this meeting, and the council sits here to thumbs up or thumbs down on appointments. I don't think we're meant to be just rubber stamps. I think we're meant to be thoughtful participants, and we express our acceptance. And this is one that I, I'm, yeah, I'm really struggling with, which is why we asked it to be pulled, and obviously why there are folks here now. There's a concern. I don't know about your inboxes, but my phone has been ringing. It is snowing. Sorry, my phone has been ringing, and my mailbox has been fuller than it generally is. I don't like to exaggerate, say, you know, a flood of calls and, you know, people pounding on my door, but it's up there with the, the decision about our garbage up the drive service, and that's saying something. So, not to be taken lightly, and I'm very concerned.
So I, I share your concern, Jackie. If the, just for clarification, though, if, if the council would vote down any member of this slate of nominees, is it the mayor's intention to nominate Jim Reyer in that, in his place?
It would not be.
So.
We could leave it blank then. We can leave a vacated slot. I don't think we should be forced into accepting a substitute. It just feels patently wrong. There hasn't been given any substantive reason, other than I want to go in a different direction, which doesn't mean anything to me.
So I'm going to play devil's advocate, and.
Go for it.
Let me just, yeah, because Jim is a friend, and I think he's done absolutely wonderful things for the city over the last, you know, decade almost. But I'm looking for guidance here, because I agree with you, the council's not a rubber stamp. We shouldn't be a rubber stamp. Having said that, we all agree that the mayor has the power to appoint, and.
With our approval.
With our approval. But what is, what does our approval entail? Because we don't get the candidate that we want, does that necessitate our disapproval, our rejection of the candidates?
Okay, that's your whole question?
Yeah, that's my question, to anybody, not just to you.
To me, yeah. Well, Phil, jump in. I don't want to.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's kind of twofold. One is if there is some reason to disqualify somebody, you would not vote in support of them. I also think there's also a reason to vote for someone because they have the qualifications. I personally, I don't know Dan either, but knowing that the, knowing of the loss that's going to be experienced on the commission now, and having heard firsthand from other commissioners that they don't want to be the chairperson or in plan commission, that's a great loss. And actually, I think what we need to do, at least I personally, I can't vote for somebody unless they've got at least substantive qualifications that will help to fill that void, that, that is going to be made by Jim's absence.
Well, then I would have an issue with that, because unprecedented, that is not what this council has done for as long as I've been served here. We have always welcomed new people who are, the only qualifications that we've had are that they're committed to the time, involved, and, I mean.
No, I.
Above and beyond that, I don't know of any significant qualifications.
No, I hear you, Matt, and I, I agree with you on that. I think the point is that we generally fill vacancies that are created by the person who left, not by somebody who said, oh, I know you're deeply involved with this, and your team supports you, but I don't want you there. This is the difference. When Chris Smith, who was the chair, he left, not because we got rid of him, but because he moved. And, and so then Jim stepped in and, and has led admirably. And I, I mean, I don't agree with everybody on everything ever. We know that. That's part of how we, we are part of the advise and consent part, and the advise here, to me, is it's better to leave a vacant spot than to be pushed into accepting a candidate that is replacing this, the, an essential element of a team.
The commission needs a leader.
I don't think that, I think that we should be looking at the candidates that we have and what, I mean. Danielle, we can't hear you. Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I would like to speak about the candidate that has been presented. I met him when I was, during my campaign, and he was very informed, and he is very eager to be a part of the city and to participate. So I think, I mean.
Does he live in your same?
He does live in my district.
So another person from Kent's district. Just pointing that out. But it'd be nice to have someone from not just District One.
Jackie, we have a myriad of districts represented throughout this list.
We, we do, just like we have a myriad of representatives on the growth committee, but they're all men, you know, so, other than me. So I'm just like, there's a weakness in this, and I can be voted down, you know that, and I, I will take my lumps, but I just had to speak that I'm sure Dan is a very nice man, and he cares. And there are lots of commissions where he could apply for. It just feels a little bit like cherry picking, I'll be honest. That's what, that's what it looks like from where I sit, because I'm usually on the outside. I'm not an inner planet in this, in this game. I'm a, I'm Pluto, junior planet.
Planetoid.
No, not a planetoid. There's a difference.
So you would rather have the seat vacant than have a qualified, a qualified can, I'm not going to disparage Dan. I think, from what he looks, he's a very qualified individual. Is he Jim Reyer? No. But you would rather, you think in the best interest of the city, you would, it serves the city better to have a vacant seat than to have?
No, I think it doesn't, neither, this does not serve the city well, which is why I'm not happy about it, which is why I'm speaking to it. And I can't support all three candidates. I can't support one of them for the simple reason, it seems like there's no, it's a specious argument to just say, I want to go different, you know? It's like saying, well, I don't like you. And that's, to me, not a governmental reason to move somebody off a committee. So you can have a right.
I think that our, if looking at the three candidates that have been presented here, we have an alder, an alderman, an experienced candidate, Dave Rabson, has been very involved in the city for years, and we have a new person with fresh ideas that can maybe bring some fresh perspective to the city. So I think this is a very well-rounded group of candidates.
I'm sure you do, but you don't know the history, and so I don't blame you.
I don't, but I think that it isn't to say, I mean, I understand that Jim Reyer has experience, but there's, there's value in having new, new perspective and new eyes on things.
There is, when it's done in a way that I think is not the way it's been done. That's my only.
How was that?
But I haven't heard anybody speak negatively about Jim Reyer. I haven't heard any, I mean, there wasn't.
Right.
Anything said that he was removed for cause. I mean, it's just, that's not what's being said here, so I don't see.
Yeah. Well, I think it, what, I don't know why, because there's been no reason given, and that troubles me.
But you don't need a reason.
These aren't removals. These are three-year terms. These aren't life appointments.
I realize that.
And so, in the history of the, in the history of the city, the brief time I've been intimately involved in the, in the government, there's been, you know, a good half dozen of very eager, willing volunteers that typically find out that they weren't renominated by looking at the, the public posting of the agenda.
Which is really bad.
That's horrible. However, I shouldn't say horrible. It's, it's kind of a status quo in a lot of, in a lot of municipalities. It's my understanding that, that the mayor reached out and called different people that he was making changes on, and, you know, Mary Daniel is another one. I talked with her, and she, she's fairly proud to, she's a relentless and very dedicated volunteer in the city, and, and, you know, she's had the honor of being fired by two mayors, if you want to call it being fired. But it's just, it's just not being reappointed. And, and I don't think that there's anything that, moving forward, you know, there's good people that have been taken off of boards, and there's really good people that have been put on boards by, by this mayor and other mayors. And.
I just.
And I don't think it's our, I don't think it's our responsibility of vetting candidates to compare them to who they're being replaced by or with. It's really to see, are these people qualified?
Well, yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Tim. I think my concern is that I'm not used to seeing the chairperson of any committee being removed. Dan Zesinski's been chair of Public Works for longer than I've been on council, and, you know, you can go through and, and look at that. So it's unusual, and when an unusual move is made, I just want to know why. And going in different directions is a, is a nebulous, not, it's not a reasoned reason. So I'm going to guess there's a reason, and, and that's all. I'm sure that all the people here, I mean, I've nominated, you know that, a lot of people to be on different groups, Lake Welfare, Public Works, Library, and so forth. And some of them get picked, and some don't. And I have accepted all of them, including my own movement from many committees. That's fine. This one just, just, I, I can't, I can't swallow it. That's all. And, you know, I can go down in the vote. I've gone down before.
Well, it's not, so, so it wouldn't be you going down in the vote. It'd be, it'd be putting more burden on people in a, in a committee that would be shorter member.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm curious what, what the long-term remedy would be for having, maintaining a vacancy on a.
I guess my goal would be to have better dialogue, rather than just, you know, oh, by the way, you're fired. I, I don't understand that. People, you know, put their hearts and soul in this, whether we like them or not. So it's just my concern. So, you know, that's, I just don't like the, the method here. That's all.
If I may clarify my position too, as far as having.
Louder into your microphone, sir. I'm deaf, that's all. I really have a hard time.
As far as, if I, if I can clarify my position, when I said qualified, the first two candidates for the board of review, I think are great. Board of review, look at their backgrounds, and they're involved in real estate and other things that would be appropriate for board of review and making those kind of decisions. I don't know Dan at all, but the, with the application I was given, I didn't see anything that would, other than being a citizen, which is an important thing, help to contribute to the, like you said, the void that would be needed by the committee. I think there is a need, that I would hope a candidate would actually help to fill some of those things. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not going to vote until Jim Reyer's back on there. I, I understand the position that you don't want to put him back on, but I think there's some needs of the committee that have to be met, and I know there's other candidates that must be out there that could better represent those needs. So that's.
One last thought is, when other people have been moved, I've never had the, the reaction from the citizens that I've had with this one. I've never had people call and go, how could you move Jackie off of Lake Welfare, or whatever, you know? It was just like, oh, well, you know, that happens. But this was different. And that, I guess, I just look, I look at patterns, and I see people from all around the city, not just neighbors, or, you know, the usual suspects whom I call. It's, it's been quite a reaction, and that's interesting to me. You know, the science person in me just goes, hmm, data. What does that mean? Means something. That's all.
I have a hard time reconciling that leaving the seat vacant. I mean, the question, the question that, that has been put towards me and, from various people in various ways is what's in the best interest of the city? Is it, is the possibility of retaining the chair, current chair, is not a possibility? Leaving that seat vacant is not in the best interest of the city.
But it doesn't mean it has to be vacant forever.
We said we'd fill the CDA at the next meeting, so I would think perhaps we could have a nomination for this one and complete that committee at that time as well.
All right. It just might bear some more processing. That's all.
I would hope not to leave it vacant, no.
What did you say?
I would hope not to leave it vacant.
So we're turning down a volunteer.
Not the goal. Not the goal at all.
The intent would be to turn down a volunteer?
Are we asking for a different candidate than this, or are we asking for multiple candidates to be able to choose from? I mean.
No, that's.
But you don't get, and I know you agree with me.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, are we turning down this candidate because we don't think he's qualified?
Right. We might, you know, I always, I'll draw the parallel. President Biden will nominate, has nominated, and the Senate approved Merritt Garland for Attorney General. Would, if I were a senator, would that be my, would I, would that, would he be my first choice? No, I'd rather have maybe Bill Barr, or who knows who. Don't roll your eyes.
I will roll my eyes, I know.
All right, you can roll your eyes. But, I mean, that's my point. What's in the best interest of the city might be the Jim Reyer, but that's not my, that's not my choice. What might be, I can't see leaving the seat vacant as being the best interest of the city. And I can't see making a futile vote, a futile gesture against mayoral powers, and I hesitate to use the word flouting, but flouting the law that we all took an oath to do, is that not in the best interest of the city? We do your due diligence. We have a qualified candidate, and that, and that is our role. I might not like the nominee that he put forward. I might not like Merritt Garland, but I'll, but the president is allowed that right to nominate who he nominates.
But the Senate also has background in that area, and I think there's other candidates. I said Merritt Garland has background in that area.
Right.
So consequently, there, there, I think, to have somebody, I didn't see any experience in city government here, and I just know that committee needs to have strong people on it.
We're taking away such a strong player, and to replace such a strong member of a team with complete novice. That's fine. If someone were just replacing another member of Parks and Rec who wasn't, you know, so deeply steep, that's my concern.
So given that you find this candidate unqualified, and.
No, it's not about the candidate. It's about the removal of the chair, who's been on the committee for.
But Jackie, we're going in circles here.
It's not, it's not that, but it's not that. It can't be that, because you can't, that's not your, that's not your role.
You pick the behavior. I can speak to it.
Are you, are you aware that real estate experience is a hindrance to the board of review, Phil? It's actually, it's actually not something you're supposed to bring to the table? I mean, you brought that up as a relative, it, it's, it's of interest. It's good, it's good to have some background, but just from a standpoint of, the, the main criteria for a volunteer on any committee in this city is, in, in any city, is, is your interest in improving the community and showing up and putting in the hours. And Dan clearly has leadership experience, and.
With what? I'm sorry, can you, I don't, I, I was going by what was on the page. I'm sorry, can you, I don't, I was going by what was on the paper, so maybe I missed something, but.
We didn't see.
He's the president and CEO of a company.
Yeah.
But I could be, my sister's a president and CEO of a company.
So this is about, so what's really, what's really in front of us is approval or disapproval of candidates for appointees on commissions, and frankly, I think this, it's extremely unfortunate that we can't really silo the two different issues, because one of the issues is, how do we recognize and support Jim Ryer and his dedication and hard work and accomplishments in the city, and I think there's a million ways we can do that moving forward, and, you know, I brought up Mary Daniel as well, I think his dedication to volunteer and improve the city is going to be relentless, and I think we've got a lot of ways that he's going to continue to serve in our discussion and Phil's suggestion that we have a committee for citizen recognition on an annual, at least, basis, I think Jim kind of bubbled right to the top of the list as far as someone that deserves recognition, and we're remiss in doing that outside of this process. So, I'm separating the two different issues as far as Jim's not leaving the city, I hope, and I know in an unofficial, you know, outside the city appointee capacity, I'm counting on him to stick around and doing as good or better work than he's always done, but based on how the process works, this is where we're at, and I think it would be very, very disappointing, you know, Doug mentioned it yesterday, as far as more people should get involved in the city, and, you know, Dan raised his hand and said he wants to, I think we should, we should take another volunteer and add him to the list, and maybe we'll have another Jim Ryer on top of the Jim Ryer we have and love.
Well, I think it's a kick in the head, and I would have preferred to see Jim serve out and retire from, which was his goal in another year or so.
I agree, and when I talked, I've used the term, you know, it's an unceremonious departure from a good line of work.
Yeah.
But I think, but I don't, I don't see, I don't think there's a purpose in leaving, I don't think there's a purpose in leaving a seat vacant.
Yeah, I just, I can't be pushed into.
So do we have a motion on the table?
No.
I lost track.
No, I just wanted to discuss before a motion was made.
Well, I move that, I don't know if I can combine it in one motion, but, and I recognize, I recognize Jim's, Jim's great work, but I, and there's, we owe it to the city to, and Jim to recognize that and give him some positive affirmation to continue doing good service for the city, and I welcome new blood to the city commissions, and I move to approve the Park and Rec candidates as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, I feel as strongly as these folks about Jim, and I've talked to him on the phone at length, and he asked me if I'd support him, and I said I certainly will. I primarily did that to, number one, to talk to the mayor at least once, and I'm not going to say everything I said to the mayor, but the mayor knows I supported him. On the other hand, you know, this afternoon I was thinking about this, and I wanted to sit and listen to the conversation, because I, Jim's sitting here, and we've been hand in hand, and almost, I probably is as much of those projects as any of the other volunteers, but we have things that come before the plan commission we don't like personally, I mean, there's a process here that we have to follow, and I guess to keep something vacant, just to recognize Jim's effort, that I can't see either, and so.
That's not the point either.
The mayor, when you win an election, I kind of told Kent this a couple of years ago, you do, you do win the right to kind of steer the business a little bit, and I don't agree with his change, but I also think, his logo last night said, you know, we need more people to get involved, and I know that someone might say, well, the way we're treating Jim is that that's what you get, but we do need more people to get involved, and I can tell you, in the past, I recruited people 30 years ago, and, you know, what you want is people to actively serve, or you move on, and I know certainly Jim has actively served, but we're trying to get some new blood in here, and that's the mayor's role. So I have to say, I'm going to support the motion, even though it kills me to do it, but I feel like it's a process thing that, that we just have to move beyond this, and, you know, it's, it does bother me on this one, though.
All righty.
So if you're counting the tea leaves, I just didn't want to not say something.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Got the three nays. Abstentions, motion carries. All right. We'll move on to C.
I'll move to approve resolution number 2021-8, designating the Freeman as our official newspaper.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes, and we have D.
Move, I'll move to approve resolution number 2021-09, designating our public depositories and authorizing withdrawal of city Delafield monies.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, call back that motion. Can you remind me what that was, please?
In the last paragraph, the last paragraph, it lists the treasurer as a signer, and we have never had the treasurer sign, it's always been the clerk and the mayor.
So we need to remove the word treasurer.
And we can add Wayne Dean as council president and Molly Schneider as city clerk in the blank lines.
Would you like to amend your motion to include those?
I absolutely do.
I'll second the amendment.
And the second agrees?
Agrees.
Okay, you got it? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 6:34.